Okay, roll call by Recording Secretary.
Tonight we have Teresa Gerdak-Carter, Ryan Celeste Street, Ted Strahan House is not here tonight, Judith Polonin, and Jean Strom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
His daughter's getting married.
Congrats.
Opening statement by Chair, unnecessary because everyone's heard it, that's here. Are the consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? Seeing there are none. Comments from citizens? Hi Noah, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Eric, got anything for us today?
I don't know if this one, thank you.
Jared, Noah, you good? Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes, February 22nd. Does anybody have any issues with February 22nd?
It wasn't.
Okay. Abby, I had just Section 4G. The word "snow" is there. I think it just needs to say "it expanded" and not "it's snow expanded."
Okay.
I'm a school teacher, sorry.
No, it's great, it's great.
Okay, with that correction, can I get a motion to accept February 22nd?
Motion, so moved.
Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, April 16th, next minutes to take a look at. I had Section 5. Terry says, the state says residents are defined as... Section 5, let me take a look at that. Are you on it?
We're in the April 16th meeting.
April 16th, yeah. Oh yeah, it just says Terry says, the state says, and doesn't say anything else. The second bullet point.
On what page?
On page...
There isn't a page.
On the second page of the April 16th.
Okay.
If you could just take that out.
Yeah, I have one small correction. Right in the call to order, it says, "Meeting was called to order March 16th," and I believe it should be April 16th.
Thank you, I noticed that too.
What's that?
I noticed that too, thank you.
And the only other thing I had on that one was Section 7, number 7. Says, "Any change to the flood right..." It just should say regs or regulations instead of not, R-I-G-H-T.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything on April 16th?
Nope. I'm moved to accept the minutes of April 16th.
Can you say as corrected?
As corrected, sorry.
Jean, will you second that one?
I'll second, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, and then the minutes from, that Alicia, that Alicia took on May 21st, 2024. I had, I think something important. We made a motion to accept the new agenda, and that isn't mentioned. But I have to go, I guess I have to watch the film to see who made the motion and who seconded it. But I know we made that motion to accept the new agenda when we changed the agenda. And the other thing was number 21, Jason, Rose and I met, not, not Rose, Ryan and I met. On number 21. So if we, you know, accept these minutes for those changes, I'll watch the film and see who motioned to accept the new agenda and who seconded it. And let Alicia know. Those are the corrections, if you guys agree, that need to happen. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, Brian, yeah.
Eric?
Eric, I'm in the tail end room. I just wanted to point out, I don't know if it can be changed or not, but on page 3, Section 23, where I'm speaking, I misspoke and mentioned Maine Mountain when I really meant to say Homestyle Hostel.
Okay, page 3?
Page 3, number 23. I'm talking about the foundation of Maine Mountain, obviously Maine Mountain's across the street.
Oh yeah, I thought, I didn't notice that too.
Yeah.
I knew you were talking about the Homestyle Hostel.
It's more coincidental because it's the same mountain.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, so instead of Maine Mountain, you wanted to say the Homestyle Hostel.
Homestyle Hostel, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Their new business name is Homestyle Hotel.
Okay, Homestyle Hotel.
Do we want to just table it and approve it?
Yeah. Because you gotta, I have to look and see.
You have to look at the video.
Yeah, I have to look and see who made the motion. I meant, I was gonna do that, but I just ran out of time.
That's good.
But we've got two minutes done, two sections done. Okay, moving on. Next agenda item is our flood hazard regulations. We have Jason here, and we also have Ned and Asa, who are our flood, state flood people doing this, to help us with this. Jason, do you want me to share my screen, or do you?
Yeah, maybe if you don't mind, and I'm not honestly sure if you want me to talk or if you want Asa to talk. It's, uh, it's up to you, but I guess before, just for my benefit, there were two drafts kicking around. I think in your packet is, is a draft that's dated March 8th, and I do have a draft dated June 11th, but I'm not sure if you've looked at that yet. So I just want to clarify, which, which version does everybody have in front of them?
We have 5.8.
The 5.8?
Yeah.
Okay.
I did send everybody it through email after I got it from Jason, but I said you probably didn't get a chance to look at it yet.
So it, in the June 11th version, which you haven't looked at, you know, I was trying to make a few changes after our last meeting. However, you know, maybe just for clarity, it's good to stick with the 5.8 draft, but whatever you want. But since you haven't seen the other one, it might not make sense to talk about it yet.
So you don't want me to put that one up there?
Uh, your choice. I just don't want to confuse people with something they haven't seen yet.
Okay. But we can make the changes that, that you were suggesting.
I mean, there's not a lot of them, we can talk about it, but again, the main changes I made were I deleted the local flood hazard area. We're keeping River Corridor, and that basically replaces the local hazard area, sort of kinda. So I deleted that in this draft, and I made a few other little tweaks, but that was the main thing.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen.
So is that number four you're talking about, Jason? Flood, local flood hazard area?
Yeah, if you're looking, starting on page 1 in the table.
Okay.
So I, in my latest draft, again, that you haven't looked at, I deleted the local flood hazard area, which you currently have in your zoning now. I'm leaving in River Corridor, which you don't have right now. They're basically very similar, and we can talk more about that if you'd like. And then on, uh, the very bottom of page, my page 2 anyway, and onto page 3, that's where the local flood hazard area language was, and I'm striking that out, at least for conversation's sake.
Peter, can you give me permission to share my screen, please?
Jason, did the bill go through for the river, that included the River Corridor at the state's?
Yes.
I thought it, yeah.
Yeah, Senate Bill 213, and that did, well, it got vetoed, and then they, no, I'm sorry, that did pass, I'm sorry. It's passed, it's law, and, but it's gonna take, I think it's till 2028 before, you know, Asa, please correct me, I think it's gonna be 2028 until the state starts issuing those permits. So you know, if this is something LEBLO wants to do, we got four years, so, and it would, you know, you'd be doing it much faster than the state's gonna be doing it, so.
Okay, now I got it up there. So what did you tell me, which column to eliminate, River Corridor?
Um, so in the table, there's the local flood hazard area column that...
Yep.
Sort of in the middle.
Right here?
Yep. That entire column basically is going away.
Okay.
You know, at least for conversation's sake.
Yeah, we're just gonna continue on where we left off, more or less?
Basically, yeah. And then Terry, that language right there, at the bottom of that page, where it says local flood hazard area?
Yep.
That section, it's about a half of a page, would get deleted, basically, yeah.
Okay.
That was the main change between those two drafts, so if we're on the same page now, I think we can still look at the draft you have up. And I know we talked about it last time, I'm not sure, there's often confusion between, you know, the River Corridor provisions are about erosion, like river-related erosion. The special flood hazard area standards are generally about inundation-type flooding, and that, you know, there's these really two distinct types of flooding. When I start talking about River Corridor, sometimes people respond with, "Well, it doesn't flood there." I know. Because part of it, part of it is like, it's about, you know, the stream banks sloughing off, things like that. So, you know, I think Ned's here, and Asa is here, so I think we could hear from them if you wanted to talk a little bit more about that. I just want to make sure folks are really clear about the distinction and what these new regulations will do. And so, are there any questions on, sort of, with that in mind?
I think the biggest question I had last time is just the extent of the River Corridors throughout the town and village. I know we're kind of focusing in on the village, but, you know, tributaries come off of, big to be in Commonwealth, it turns into the town pretty quickly, so. That was, that was my biggest concern, is what's the extent of the River Corridor footprint?
Yeah, and I think you have some maps in front of you of the village only, so, you know, you won't get it, what exactly you're asking, in terms of what, what the town impacts would be. But in the village specifically, this local flood hazard area is basically along, it's like a 20, no, it's a 15-foot setback from the Jewel Brook, and that's it, basically, in the village. And then the River Corridors would basically replace that, there's a much wider mapped River Corridor along Jewel Brook. And then there's two tributaries, one along the Mountain Road, and then one along Commonwealth Avenue, that would fall under these new River Corridor rules. So again, it's not really answering your question about the town, but that's, that's the main difference.
But so, for an example, the tributary coming down off of Commonwealth, that would continue north? Because of River Corridor?
Uh, for a while, yeah, I think that would continue for a while. I'm not looking at the map off.
Yeah. But I guess, what's the, what would be the delineation, what's, where would, what would cause it to stop?
Ned or Asa, do you mind helping me? I'm forgetting if it's a .25 acre, I'm forgetting the threshold for the River Corridor streams.
Ned, would you mind?
Sure, I can jump in. Hi, Asa, hi, Jason. Yeah, so River Corridors are, as you described, mapped along larger bodies like the Black River and Jewel Brook. And then for small streams, that have a watershed of at least .5, half a square mile, then they would be treated with, you know, basically being handled with a 50-foot setback from top of bank. What that means, especially in a place that's steep, you know, where the mountains come down to the valley rather rapidly, a lot of times those are places where the water arrives and also sediment arrives, you often have alluvial fans and a fair amount of damage in those locations, that the River Corridor really doesn't entirely capture, to be honest. But that is one of the benefits of having that kind of a setback in those areas.
You know, my two cents, those two additional tributaries in the village, I think as you all know, we've seen some, some damages along those stretches of water, so.
Yep.
It makes some sense to me that, that we would add those protections there, but again, we can, we can talk about that if there's any questions. Are there any concerns about, or any questions about the River Corridor in general? Because again, this is new to folks, and there's a lot of pretty detailed standards in here. I feel like we've been looking at it for a couple of months, so I don't want to go into all the detail, but I do want to just make sure there's, especially with Ned and Asa here, if there's any questions, now's a good, good time to bring it up.
And I know they sent us a checklist to go through our document with, to make sure that, and he said in some places we were stronger than we needed to be, which was okay. But Asa, you didn't see anything completely whacked in our, in our bio last year, did you?
As far as from the NFIP standpoint, yeah, everything, everything looks good. The things that I believe that were a higher standard would be the two-foot free boards, so requiring building two feet above the base flood elevation, and I believe the other one... Yeah, no, I think that was it.
Yeah, the reason why we did that was our last flood, the inundation was 10 inches above a foot, and like most of the town going south to, on 103, like the trailer park across from the high school, they were two feet...
Two Meadow Streets.
Underwater Meadow Street. Oh yeah, definitely Meadow Street, where Ellen Cash lives.
I have a question. So on, on the first page, well, there, you said that the, the second column, the local flood hazard area was deleted, right?
In my latest draft, yes.
Yes. Oh, okay. So that would continue on to the next page, that whole column is deleted?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly.
Yeah, they're, they're basically in the same part of town.
Right.
And I didn't want to have sort of two competing sets of rules.
That makes sense.
Confuse people.
Yep.
And so, the River Corridor is a little more restrictive, and so it made a lot of sense to me to just get rid of the old local flood hazard area.
And at the last meeting, Jason and Rose and I met before that meeting, and we beefed up this chart and combined things from the old chart, you already know that, into this chart that we felt was missing.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that that was...
One thing I did want to talk about, Jason, is when, when we were talking about the Preservation District, some people in our board were wanting to make sure green space was protected, and I asked John Booker, I sent John Booker Campbell an email about that, and he said we didn't have anything in our flood rules that protect green space.
Not really. You know, there, there is a newish, well, this would be new to you, there's a provision in here that says that there's no net loss of flood storage capacity, that's a different thing, but if there is development in the floodplain, you need to sort of compensate for that, you know, if it's a 2,000-square-foot house, you have to have a sort of equivalent size hole, basically, to, so that there's still the same flood capacity. And so that's not necessarily open space, or new open space, but it, in most cases it would be, you know, if you know, if you follow what I'm saying.
Okay, and I also promised I'd ask the question, FEMA buyout for the Timber Inn, that's all gonna be demolished and everything?
Yep.
What can go in there? Can solar panels go in there?
If it's a buyout, I don't know all the intricate details, but basically you can't build on it.
Nothing.
So it'd have to be a park, you know, you could have picnic benches, or trees, or, you know, whatever.
But no, no solar panels?
I don't know that offhand, but, I don't know if Ned, if you know that offhand, but I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit. Definitely you can, again, I know the lot's pretty low relative to the river, but, you know, you could do park space, you could do floodplain restoration there, you could put in benches and tables, but you know, you could not put panels in there.
Okay.
Can you put a parking lot there?
No.
Parking lot, Ned, I don't know.
No. No.
Couldn't it be gravel lot?
Not paved.
It could be, you know, you could end up parking on the grass, you know, but you clearly couldn't, you wouldn't be allowed to develop it.
No pavement.
I'm asking if it can be a gravel, gravel lot, no pavement, a gravel.
Yeah, as far as I know, not, but that's something outside my direct understanding, so you could always check in with Vermont Mercy Management, the Hazard Mitigation Program, just to clarify that.
Isn't, I thought it was, to my understanding, that a plan for the use of a, of the land of a FEMA buyout had to basically be spelled out before the bio was processed? So, I don't know if that had happened, or if that's true.
That's worth following up on, just to clarify what the town's intent is, yeah.
Scott, do you know that?
What you do it for?
Yeah, what, what the town's set for?
Green space.
Green space.
Just green.
Okay.
You know, we can, I can potentially follow up with that too. If it's a park, you'd think you'd want access to the park, so I'm not sure how that works. Maybe you got to park it alongside the road, I don't know. We can, I can follow up.
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, I guess my mentality with that is that gravel, obviously, if it gets picked up by floodwaters, it's not gonna destroy a house downstream, you know, so, as opposed to concrete or pavement.
And you can't park beside it because it's on 103.
Yeah, that's dangerous.
It's dangerous, so.
I don't know, I can follow up.
Jason, were there other changes that, from the new document that you sent us that you want us to talk about tonight, besides one of the...
I think that was the, the main one. We had talked about a few tweaks, we had talked about the filler grading in the table, and the comment that I heard was update that. I left it in there because of the, that flood storage capacity standard, I thought we needed that to stay. Other than that, I don't think there was a lot of other changes.
Okay, so that's number nine, the filler grading resulting in no net loss of flood storage?
Yeah, so just to be, what I'm talking about is...
Be nine and, nine and 10.
Number 10 on my table.
Okay.
And what I'm referring to is on page 6, under E, where it says development standards within the flood hazard area. That first one, says no net loss of flood storage capacity. I think those are tied together to some extent or the other, and I'm happy if Ned or Asa wants to correct me, but I think we want to keep that in the table because of that other language.
It is a tricky standard, just to speak to that. This is allowing somebody to potentially elevate on fill, and, and that, you know, while that can work for the building, it, it does become problematic for the neighbors. And so that's typically why we would prefer to elevate on post piers or flood-vented area underneath the building, you know, rather than fill. But this language does still work.
Yeah, I mean, fill also would probably get eroded in a flood event as well, so.
It potentially could.
Yep.
And that's why we had it, like, Xed out in two of our columns, the special flood areas and the floodway, but not the River Corridor.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things we were trying to do, Rose was asking that we use some similar language that's in your current flood language, and incorporate it into this table, and we were trying to do that and still be consistent with sort of the new language and the model, and it, it's not always easy, so I hope we've hit the mark.
Yeah.
But if not, we can certainly talk more about it.
And we have that conditional PC there, permitted and conditional, depending on the ZA or what they decide, or she decides. Is there anything else we need to do with this, or are we done with it for now?
I think we were, we were pretty thorough at the last meeting, and I kind of understand, my, my whole, my biggest question from the last meeting is just the extent of the River Corridor and what that threshold is. I believe I understand that to an extent with the watershed. But I just know that there were, there was other flood damage throughout the town, I know we're focusing in on the village, but...
But we have to do that next, we have to do the town next.
Exactly, so, you know, one, one should follow the other.
Yeah, definitely.
You know?
Let's freshen our minds.
That's great.
So we'll start that next month, because there's no way, you know, we're gonna have a public hearing again until we have many things to bring there.
Yeah.
Okay, Ned and, or Asa, do you want to add anything before we move on with our agenda?
Maybe I would just ask one, one thing about, in the table anyway, item 8. So item 8 is replacement water supply and septic systems, and I just want to point out that weirdly enough, to be in the National Flood Insurance Program, you need to make sure that you're making sure these systems work and don't get, don't fail in the flood. However, the state has complete control over water supply and septic system, so you, you really have at the municipal level, your hands tied, and it really has to go to the state wastewater program. The intent here, I think, is to say that replacement structures, you know, they could actually become, you know, a big mound system in a floodway or something like that, and that, that could be a problematic situation. And so you really do want to be able to have some control over that. So the, the problem is that, again, if you're trying to regulate water supply or septic, you're not allowed to, but you are allowed to regulate fill. And so it's just, that's why those things are good to have listed as P, as permitted. That basically means that the applicant would just need to check in with the town on some level and just, yeah, it's not in the floodway, you know, there's no big mound of fill coming in here, and just to be clear about that. And if there is, then the town would have the right and the duty to be sure that it's not harming other structures, that there'd be no rise analysis. So I guess I would say, I would personally say, yeah, so, the language, be good look at the language below, just to double check that, you know, I think the language below, I'm sorry if I, I'm a little foggy on the text, but it might be that it allows it, you know, probably if it meets the no-rise requirement, and it would allow it if there was no other place to put it. I think that's how it might read. Jason, can you point me to the right spot?
That looks like it, it's F1C, I...
There is something on page 7.
Number 8.
Six, seven, and eight. Item 6, 7, and 8 on page 7.
There we go. So, so that, that works really, I'm sorry, so I'm sorry about the digression, yeah, so six and seven, you might, you should keep them in there, but really the state theoretically is doing that for you, and then 8 is the language that basically says they, that these systems, that's a new system or replacement system, shall be located to avoid impairment or contamination from. And, yeah, that's not... Theoretically, the state is carrying for that too, but your, your concern is really about the flood fill, you know, flood, fill in the floodway would be the big, the big showstopper, so...
They have under, on page 9, development standards within the floodway, septic is mentioned.
Page 9?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, number 1C, yeah. New encroachments relating to health and safety measures such as replacement of pre-existing onsite septic and water supply systems if no practicable alternative is available. So that would be the, the conditional approval situation.
I think it's one more page down, I have a different version of it.
Okay, alright. So, alright, I'm sorry about the digression, I think, I think this all works.
So, but I guess that does bring up a good question, is does the town even have the ability to make that conditional? The town is, it's a state, it's a state approval.
Well, I think Ned was accurate in the way he was describing, it's a little funky because the state has jurisdiction on water and wastewater permits, but, you know, we're using the state model bylaw language here, it's in there, it must have passed the review test, so.
Yes.
So I think, I think we're in good shape there, but probably Ned knows more about it than I do.
Well, I guess if, I would put myself in a position of someone who's trying to replace their septic system.
So I think, I think we're in good shape there, but probably Ned knows more about it than I do.
Well, I, I guess if, I would put myself in a position of someone who's trying to replace their septic system, and that would confuse me as to who has authority to tell me yes or no.
Well, I think, and again, Ned, please correct me, you know, you, you got to go to the state to get your, your wastewater permit for the new system.
Yeah, and the state says yes, and the town says no.
And, yeah, so the state says, yep, here you go, knock yourself out, you got to have, you know, here's a permit for your mound system.
Yeah.
And you say, oh, wait a minute, that's a fast.
And then it goes in front of the DRB, and the DRB says no.
Well, they're, they're going to say, well, what do you think, how do you respond to that, Ned?
Yeah, it's a, it's a failsafe, it's, it's not likely to become an issue. The, the state process says you can't put a new, a system in the floodway. You can't put it in the river corridor, you should avoid putting it in the river corridor. But nonetheless, there can be situations where the information comes in that's faulty, and this would give the town the opportunity legally to make sure that it's going to be designed in a way it doesn't hurt other people, and also doesn't fail because of inadequate information.
So, I'll, I'll flip the script on this. Does this also allow the town to say if the state says no on a septic that otherwise would make a property uninhabitable? Does the town have the ability to say, well, under these conditions will allow you to save the, your ability to live in this home?
But why are we even talking about it in the village with town water and sewer, though?
There's stuff in the village that's, I believe.
Yeah, because they chose them not to hook on, so you're talking about that scenario?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, I suppose, you know, that is another angle. In the village, in most cases, they would have an option to probably hook into the municipal systems.
Yeah, that's probably more for the, that's probably more for the town at that point than...
Right.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd also say that, you know, one of the largely nice things about this process is that, you know, DEC staff review each application and they do provide recommendations. And so if it's one of those situations where, you know, that, that they'll be providing a recommendation to Rose and Jared that would help guide them potentially through that question.
So, Asa and Ned, has this been vetted by a lawyer? Is this something we'd have to have our zoning lawyer, Chris Callahan, take a look at before we brought it to the village trustees? Or has it already been vetted by a lawyer? It's obviously a state document, we tweaked it a little, but...
Yeah, it's, it's gone through state review, it's gone through FEMA review, it's been pretty well vetted. And then the changes that I see made are not changing the liability situation that I can see.
Good, that's good. Does anybody else have any issues or questions? No, I guess we're going to move on, I really appreciate you guys being here, Ned and Asa. Jason and I had bets over whether Asa was a woman or a man. But it was always a boy's name that my husband and I had in the reserve for one of our kids, so. It's nice to meet you guys, thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for letting us see you here.
Jason, you ready to blow this popsicle stand? Thank you very much for your help, appreciate that. I guess we're moving on to town zoning next month. All right, so our next item is our rules or procedure, and we're all here except Ted. I kind of wanted to do this when everybody was here. This, do people want to proceed with this today?
I think it would be good if Ted's here.
Yeah, okay, so I'm trying to keep moving that ahead until we have a full board here. Hey, Noah? Yeah, sure.
I do, I, I may have missed, I think I missed last month's meeting, but it'd be great to get Jason to present on housing opportunities with that study that they did for housing potential.
To this board or to your board or to...
I'd, I'd be, I'd be presented those.
Nobody in town, so it could be...
Yeah.
I'm meeting bookboards.
That would be great.
They, they had a big state funding for housing study of housing potential and where, where the best places to do that, and, and all that, so.
I know, do you want to be included in that conversation? Because I know right now Malia's trying to find a meeting time for, is that something different that we're working on with Malia? Justin and I, she sent us all a schedule for that.
Subtly different, related, but, so, Malia and Ally and our office are working on this housing study. So they're, what they're doing is they're trying to put some numbers for housing specifically for Ludlow together. And then we're supposed to talk about, yep, we do have a housing problem, I'm sure that's what the numbers will tell us. And more importantly, what do we do about it? You know, what are the tools that are available to Ludlow? And what sounds like stuff that you folks want to look at? So that'll be coming soon. I think what Noah's talking about is, we did a regional housing study. So again, some similar numbers, and we, through that process, looked at like sort of housing suitability. So what part of the region, including Ludlow, you know, is best suited for housing? And no surprises, more or less, it's the village where there's water and sewer, that sort of thing. We're also trying to exclude the river corridors and steep slopes and some of that kind of stuff, too. So we could talk about the results of that, and it, and it may segue into the other thing that Malia's working on.
Okay, well, I will talk to Brendan about, you know, getting maybe, well, we'd have the DRB in that, too? Or not, what do you, mostly the planning commission trustees and select board?
It could be, it could be all the above, you know, whatever, it could be a public meeting that just a variety of folks come to.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for what it's worth, I'll, I'll double check with, with Ally and Malia and just make sure we're on the same wavelength. If we want to have sort of a two-pronged presentation, we can do that, too, if that makes sense.
So, so you and Ally?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do we have point of reference, rules or procedure, do I need to, do we need to have a motion to table that? Or can we just move on, do we need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to table it until next month.
Until we have a full board?
With a full, with a full board, hopefully next month.
I'll second that. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, sec, agenda item number nine, trustees bylaw and changes. I met with the trustees at their June meeting, and we had already met in May, and they had made some changes. Only like one change. Oh yeah, they had changed the lot, not lot coverage. They had changed the square footage allowed to the one-fifth acre in alliance with the new state rule that it can't be any less than one-fifth acre. So that's the only change they had made then, and then, but they hadn't sent that document forward, so we met again in June, beginning of June, and they made additional changes. The first thing they want us to talk about is section 220. We added that one sentence at the end of section 220 about, let me find that. Ryan, the one that you were talking about, the condos, and asking for a permit.
Oh, interior permits?
Interior permits, yeah, that, they'd like us to rework that sentence. They don't want it to just be a small renovation that people have to get a term, a permit just for a small renovation. They want us to rework that and bring it back to their July meeting. And they might approve the zoning and send it forward, but they didn't feel like, I suggested substantial changes, I suggested that word. Brendan said he thought it was too vague, but then Rose pointed out that it does have a definition in our definitions, it means 25% or more. But they weren't on board with that as a word that we could put in there. Wait, let me find the exact sentence.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, I mean, you know, the biggest problem with that is even if you have a dollar amount allowance of cost of a project or scope of a project, a percentage, those numbers are always going to be massaged, let's say.
Okay.
Whenever you give someone a target like that, right? So it's because it's pretty much impossible to quantify.
I want to share that screen, but I'm having trouble getting my Zoom to... Well, anyway, I got the sentence, let me read it to you because it's very short, and I don't want to hold this up anymore. All right, so the sentence said, "Our permit shall be required for any interior or structural alteration, including but not limited to a change in the number of bedrooms." So they want this rework to be more specific that it's a big change, and that to also make sure the bedroom part is still in there. So I guess I would take suggestions for how we can re...
Can we wait one more time, please?
Yep. "A permit shall be required for any interior structure alteration, including but not limited to a change in the number of bedrooms." And they want it to only be for a, a big change. But they didn't like that word substantial, even though we do have definition for it. So I think maybe we should come up with a percentage, because they weren't comfortable with that 25% or more, this is a substantial definition.
Percentage of what?
Percentage of change.
But we don't, but percentage of what value, so.
Yeah, it could be, it could be something, maybe, then I'm throwing this out.
Yeah.
It could be something like structural alteration of, this is just an idea, 25% of the square footage? Or, or an additional, you know, something, maybe we look at square footage.
No, I, I, I understand, no, and, and I understand the, the hesitancy with this, the reluctance of this. It, it's just it can't be underscored enough, the effect that it has on our CLA. We have 1,100 condos in this town, and they are selling for triple, if not four times what we currently have them assessed for. And everybody else in town pays more taxes because of it.
Including all of us.
So, I think if we give people a threshold, that threshold will all, their, their plans will always be under that threshold. And then what happens if we say 25% and they do 50? And we have no as-built plan requirements, so people just have to submit a pre-plan. The pre-plan gets approved, the construction is done, and then there is no as-built plan submitted. So people plan, and then they, in construction, they do not follow their plan. And then there's no, there's no means, there's...
Recourse.
Yeah, there's a recourse for it whatsoever. So, my whole goal with this, and I'll say this, as, as the town's assessor, is to protect the CLA. I don't, I honestly don't expect this to go forward because it is very controversial, but that's the, that's the mental, that's, we're all paying for it, you know, so.
They do want it to go forward, they just want us to rework it.
Then, there, I don't think there is a way to rework it where the system won't be cheated, and it will still, and it will be just empty, empty words.
We just can't give up on it, I mean, there's something...
Oh, I'm not giving up on it, I'm just, I'm saying that I don't see how we could change the wording and still have a successful, and have a meaningful outcome.
Are you saying that a word like substantial could work because it's more subjective?
They didn't like it.
And, well...
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying that honestly, any improvement, because, this is what's typical. We're going to renovate the bathroom. Well, while we're renovating the bathroom, now all of a sudden the kitchen gets done, the living room gets refloored, the fireplace gets refaced, you know?
Yeah.
Like, you know what I mean, so. And it's just the fact that I, no, we, we can't see it, so, you know, I, I don't know. It's, it's difficult, it's difficult, we're either going to do it, or we're not. If we create this gray area, we're gonna, it's going to be successful, or successful or meaningful to the town, a small percentage of the time, in my opinion.
I think we should come up with something, though.
Um, trust me, I'm, I've been, I've had this conversation many different times, in many different venues, in many different towns. And if you give people a threshold, or you say, if you, so if you increase the, the, the value of your property, you're, so let's say we're going off of reconstruction cost value of a building. And we're going to say, if you make improvements that equal 25 or 30 or 50% of the reconstruction cost of your building, then you don't need a per, or you need a permit, or don't need a permit. One, or you, you need a permit, right? So, I guarantee you, during the plan, during the plans, it's going to always be under that threshold. And they're not going to require a permit, and then we're not going to know what happened. You know, we're not going to be able to quantify the changes, and then they're going to sell the unit, and we're going to be way off. Also, we're not going to potentially have, you know, you know, and that's the thing, too, is that every condo association has a principal insurance carrier. So not a stick of work can be done on any of these properties without us, the association, one, vetting the contractor, vetting the insurance the contractor has, and vetting the extent, the full extent of the project. So all this information is already available within the HOA and the association, they're just not willing to share it with the town.
The HOA isn't willing?
Of course not, no, the association, the condo association.
So we can't go through that to get this done?
No, but that's where the, but that's where this permit would, would come in. You know, no towns have done it, I'll be honest, no town that I'm an assessor in does it. It's, here, it's really impactful, though, it's really impactful, and I, if I have to, I can do a, I could do a ratio study to show that without, what our CLA would be without the condo sales.
But I'll tell you right now, I know that Justin's very concerned about our CLA, and he's the one that has an issue with this, so. I think he would be open to a change in the language that, I know, I mean, I hear what you're saying, that nothing's going to work unless you say any change. I hear you, what you're saying, but I'm just saying, to have something on the record, maybe, you know, there's not, everybody's going to be sneaky like that, and people are going to do like, if they're going to do like a 50% change or something, there are people that will come and get that permit, and you will have a, a way to check on it and have some recourse. I'm just saying, let's come up with something. Does anybody have a suggestion?
I think that if Justin heard the comments that Ryan made, or heard some of this discussion, he may change or not want to see a change in the building.
Well, the first time we presented it to them, Ryan was there, and he explained it, and they left it alone. But the second time, it was brought up at this last meeting in June, you weren't there, and they were saying change, all, all of them were saying change.
Ryan, what would happen if the threshold for doing this was really low, like 10%?
Well, so you, because...
Does that make it harder for them to do that?
Well, you can't really do a percentage, because a percentage of what, right? So our assessments are...
Square footage.
Well, so it'd be like a total cost of a renovation. So let's say if you're putting in, you know, $10,000, you know, is, is the project going to cost $10,000 or more? Then you need, you need a, you need an interior permit.
Let's put that in, then.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at, something like that.
Put in a monetary thing.
You know, but, but I, and, I mean, and that will work, but so, what, but if there is no, if, if there's no recourse for them, for people putting in more than $10,000 and not getting a permit, then again, it's, it's meaningless language, right? So...
Right.
But it could narrow it a little bit.
Oh, it, it won't be, I, I say meaningless, I mean, yeah, you'll get some people that play by the rules and everything like that, but a lot of people will say, hey, it's really easy not to. You know, so, I don't, I don't know, it's just more so, something I'm, I'm trying to, if we're going to do this, I'd like it to be meaningful and actually have an effect on what we're trying to correct.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult.
So are you okay with us putting that in there? "A permit shall be required for any interior structure alteration involving..."
Including change in the number of bedrooms.
Including change in the number of bedrooms, and apparently say the 10.
And or above blank.
And or above a total, a total cost of $10,000.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, a permit shall be required. Yes, can you say, can you reread it all a whole new more time? "A permit shall be required..."
I think I got it out.
You got it?
Well, the first part you're going to have to help me with, but I had written down, any, what's INT, that stand for?
"A permit shall be required for any interior..."
"Interior or structural alteration increase" that, and this is my shorthand, "that changes the number of bedrooms and/or is above a total cost of $10,000." That's really rough. Try...
No, but it's, like, yeah, I think we can polish it a little bit.
Okay, I got to get it right, too, though.
That, I kind of do like a shorthand, so some of the words get a little bit...
"A permit shall be required for any interior structural alteration..." "A permit shall be required for any interior or structural alteration, alteration, alterations, that changes the number of bedrooms." What was the last part?
And/or has a total cost exceeding $10,000.
Okay. Does that look right?
Which honestly, I would say if, if people play by the rules, that will, that would help with the CLA.
Alright, the other change...
Scott?
Oh yeah, question in the audience, Scott? I can see why you work for them. Yeah. I think we've walked around those together, dripping in sweat in the summer to do tax abatements. Okay, so we got that part, and the other change that they made is, they didn't like the 75% lot coverage in the preservation district. They wanted to change it not back to 15%, but to 20%. And then they wanted to leave the Village R2 at 30% non-residential, 50% residential, we had changed that to 75%.
Can you say the Village R2 again, please?
Yep. They wanted to change the Village R2 back to the regular, actually Village R and Village R2, back to what it was before, which is 30% non-residential, 50% residential. So anyway, they made these changes, and then I sent them to Jason and Martha, and Martha wrote back and said, "Do they understand we have a new definition of lot coverage, which includes all the driveways, the sheds, everything? Do they understand that that lot coverage now encompasses everything?" Because remember, we took those definitions and boiled them into one. And they didn't understand that. Justin responded to me, and Bob Brant responded to me and said, "No, we don't understand that." And Bob asked me to ask Jason to come up with examples, concrete examples of lot coverage. And he asked, you know, he asked them to, like, create them and said and stuff, and I said, "Well, well, you know, that grant expired in November, that gives us money to have them draw maps and stuff for us, so, and create stuff like that." But Jason did send me back some stuff, did I send it to you guys? I thought I forwarded it to you, maybe not. I forwarded it to the trustees that showed Homestyle Hostel and that lot, so they could get an idea of what percentage of that lot, I mean, there's very little, like, grass there, the Homestyle Hotel, I mean, like Abby said. So anyway, I did forward that to Bob Brant, but they want to make a change. You know, I'm not, it's not something you, that we can do something about it, but I just wanted you guys to know that, you know, they're gonna go higher than they are right now.
Without me looking, is there a definition for what lot coverage may consist of?
Yeah, we cleared, we cleared it all up.
Yeah, I thought we did.
So now lot coverage means everything that you develop, your driveway, your parking lot, your sheds, your house, your business.
I remember that conversation.
Everything is now included in lot coverage, and they didn't understand that. I thought they did, because they talked about permeated surfaces, is that what it's called?
Non-permeable.
Yeah, non-perme, yeah, I thought that's, they understood that, but then through those course of emails, I realized that they didn't. So that's another change that they're gonna make. They had switched everything back to where it was.
So they want to go back from 75% to...
They had wanted to go back from 75% to 20% in the preservation district. It was at 15%. And remember, Martha encouraged us to change it, and...
Yes, I remember that.
So we changed to 75%.
Because I want it 70.
But they wanted to change it back, not change it back, but they changed it to 20, it was at 15. But now they're gonna rethink that, because now they understand more about lot coverage. So that's another change that's gonna happen. So hopefully, that will get cleared up at the next village meeting, and they'll accept our zoning, and it'll go into the record.
That's contrary to everything, though, ever the rest of the changes we made to the document, right?
What do you mean? I know you guys are trying to encourage housing by, yes, by increasing lot coverage, yeah, exactly.
Or are we all?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But I just want you guys to know what's going on with that. And also in the commercial district, we didn't even talk about that, I hadn't listed that as a change. I had this document here for them of all the changes, and I didn't list that, I should have listed that, that that also got changed to 75%, which I think you probably want that at a commercial district, anyway, but... But they didn't touch that, because I hadn't listed it here as something to take a look at, which I should have, because it is a big change. Okay, so that's what's going on with the trustees, I'm glad we do have some language to bring to them next month. Junkyard ordinance, we talked about this a little bit last time. Ryan, was there any way you got us Manchester's?
Manchester doesn't have one.
Oh, there you go.
They have a definition of a salvage yard, and I spoke with their ZA. And in his time, he says over the, like, within the last six years, the only time it became an issue, their solution was to get them licensed as a, get them a state license as a salvage yard.
Yeah, the state doesn't even talk about junkyards, I looked at all the state stuff, they just call salvage yards.
So, yeah, otherwise, their, their document has no language towards like a junk ordinance, which I was really surprised about, but it's, yeah, what it is, so.
And Judy, you weren't here last month, but the way we left this was, we want them to tell us what they want. Do they want a bylaw? Do they want to stick with an ordinance? If they want to stick with an ordinance, it's in their hands to rewrite the ordinance. If they want us to create a bylaw, we don't want to put all the time into creating it if they don't want us to create a bylaw. So that's where we kinda left it last time. So I'll also, you know, ask Brendan to put that on the agenda, so we can ask them what they want. They want a bylaw, they want an ordinance. The thing about an ordinance is, the select board or the trustees, they can, they would have to police that. And I think they can actually have the police police that, is that correct? Scott? Yeah, it does, Brendan asked us to take a look at it, because of a lot of the calls he's been getting. And so he asked us to take a look at it and decide whether we wanted to beef it up or not. We had some discussions here, and we basically, I think we basically agreed that we think if it's a health hazard, clean it up. If it's not a health hazard, screen it. So clean it or screen it was kind of something we kept talking about up here. But we looked at Montpelier's, and theirs is actually a bylaw, ours is an ordinance. So if they wanted us to create a bylaw, Montpelier had that theory, too, clean it or screen it. If it's a public health hazard, clean it.
So when you say screen it?
Screen it, just hide it from the public. Like, if it's just a... Yeah.
If it's on Main Street.
Well, they have to completely screen it.
I find the Manchester solution kind of interesting, because there's, basically what they're saying is, if you have that much junk in your yard, then you have to be licensed as a salvage yard. If you can't get the license as a salvage yard, you gotta clean it up.
Pretty much, yeah.
That almost sounds kind of simple, you know? I'm just commenting on it, I'd like to know a little more about it.
But what makes them clean it, I don't care what makes them clean it up, like, who, who in the Manchester is making them clean it up?
Well, maybe it becomes an ordinance, you know, if you're not licensed as a salvage yard, you...
But he's saying they don't have an ordinance.
So, well, they had nothing in their zoning document, which is where I looked, and I spoke about zoning. So it could, there could be something, yeah, the select board has control.
It could be an ordinance, because that wouldn't be in your zoning document.
But it would be on their website, usually, well, it is on our website, obviously on everybody's website, on their ordinance sites.
Doesn't Ludlow already have a care ordinance?
Yeah, they have an ordinance. His, his thing was, he just wants to start the conversation, Brendan said, he just wanted us to start talking about it, start the conversation, we've talked about it now three months?
Right, so, if there already is an ordinance, and that's not working, then they need to tell us what they want us to do.
Yeah, so I will, I will ask that question, I'll ask that question at the trustees' meeting. Okay, neighborhood development areas. The problem with that is, and I'm definitely on the bandwagon for this, because Logan said that is untapped resource, towns are not taking advantage of it. It allows for streets, streets that are not Main Street to be able to fix up their buildings with these grants. It also keeps Act 250 out of the picture, if these streets have been identified as neighborhood development areas. And they would be streets that are perpendicular or parallel to Main Street. It just would open up a whole lot of grants for people that want to fix up their buildings. I asked that we have to get permission from the trustees first, they have to be on board with this before we can start getting the person from the state to come and talk to us about it, and Jason also can talk to us about it. And Bob Brant told me in an email that he doesn't want to even talk about it until they're done with village zoning. So hopefully, at this next meeting, they'll be done with our bylaw changes, and we can get on their next agenda for neighborhood development areas.
Sounds exciting.
Because I really want to tap into that money, that's something Logan's like, why isn't anybody spending this money? Next month's citizen planning, flood hazard regulations, so that's gonna be town now. We put the village to bed. Neighborhood development areas, we probably won't talk about that next month, because we're gonna have to wait till the next month of the trustees to get their permission to work on that. We'll have, hear back about junkyard ordinances, and, and what happened with our bylaw changes. So those will be things to talk about next month.
So the percentage of lot coverage, is that something that we can speak to them about at the next, at their next meeting?
Yeah, and I did send them everything that Martha, you know, Martha was very clear about it, and she didn't send it to them, I forwarded it to them, so they would be aware of that.
And just to refer, it's, they're only concerned about it in the preservation district?
No, they were, they changed it everywhere, except for the commercial district. And they don't choose it in the commercial district, just because I didn't list it here. I didn't list the change on this, some of the changes, I should have listed it, but I didn't. Yeah.
I can't think of any existing lot that even has 30% coverage, so that would, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll definitely try to be there.
They're all grandfathered, for sure. Other business, any board member comments? We did a lot.
I know, it was amazing.
We had a lot on, a lot on the agenda. Any citizen comments? So nice to have you citizens here. It's great to have two selectmen here, woo-hoo.
I do have a comment, this map was really helpful.
Jason's great that way.
I mean, that's a really nice map to make you see, and this one here.
And I know you guys know, he's like the boss of the regional planning commission.
No, I mean, these maps, these maps were really good.
Malia's their map person, she's amazing.
But it really did help.
Okay, why shall entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that, or you can second that.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favors?
Aye.
Any opposed?